निन्ना वाक्य बदलागडु निन्ना शक्तनु सर्व शक्तनु निन्ना वाक्य बदलागडु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु कर्ताने कर्ताने देवरली निनगे समनयारु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु कर्ताने देवरली निनगे समनयारु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु परलो कदमन्नो नीरी निन्ना जनरनु पोषिसिदे परलो कदमन्नो नीरी निन्ना जनरनु पोषिसिदे निन्ना तेल आरुंतु इल्ला जनरनु प्रीतिसलु निन्ना तेल आरुंतु इल्ला जनरनु प्रीतिसलु निनगे समनयारु निनगे समनयारु निनगे समनयारु निनगे समनयारु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु कर्ताने कर्ताने देवरली निनगे समनयारु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु कर्ताने देवरली निनगे समनयारु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु वंदे यंतु नीरूसिड़िये निन्ना जनराताहो नीकिदे वंदे यंतु नीरूसिड़िये निन्ना जनराताहो नीकिदे निन्ना राम अत्यशय यावागल रक्षिसुवे निन्ना राम अत्यशय यावागल रक्षिसुवे निनगे समनयारु निनगे समनयारु निनगे समनयारु निनगे समनयारु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु कर्ताने देवरली निनगे समनयारु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु कर्ताने कर्ताने देवरली निनगे समनयारु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु निनगे समनयारु निनगे समनयारु निनगे समनयारु निनगे समनयारु निनगे समनयारु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु आकाशदलु भूमियलु निनगे समनयारु
हालेलुया हालेलुया देवर पश्चिम नमक इस तोत्र उन चागली नवी देवसदली नव देवर समुकदली देवे नमन्नाव देवरिया समर्पिस्कण्डु नमन्नाव मारे तुन नव देवरन निसमयदली आरदिस्वर रागिरोण नविस्ट्रो चिन्तेगड़ली दंगिन नव कानस्तदे एल्लरु तमचिन्तेगड़ा निल्ला बधिगत्तिटु सल्पसमय नव देवर सानिदियली नव आरदनेली समयनु कालिवर रागिरोण ईसमयदली नव नंचिकरदयदी अत्युन्नतनाधन नव देवरनु आरदिस्तेनेम्बा आडनु नव आडवर रागिरोण नम्के देवर कोटंता ईसन्ना आयुषदली नव देवरिगोस्करा देवर माहिमे गोस्करा नव जीवस्पेक्रो नम्मजीवनदकोने उसिरिना वरेगु नव देवरिगोस्करा देवर माहिमे गोस्करा जीवस्वर रागिर्वेक्रो ईहाडन्नेला नव मनपुरोका वागी समयदली नव आडवर रागिरोण
नंचिकरदयादि अत्युन्नतनाधाना ओढ़िदानन पात्रया कुंबारन बड़ितंदु सरिमाडलु कोरुवे नंचिकरदयादि अत्युन्नतनाधाना ओढ़िदानन पात्रया कुंबारन बड़ितंदु सरिमाडलु कोरुवे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना यहूदर हृदय राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना भरलिर वारन राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना यहूदर हृदय राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना भरलिर वारन राजनीरे नंचिकरदयादि अत्युन्नतनाधाना ओढ़िदानन पात्रया कुंबारन बड़ितंदु सरिमाडलु कोरुवे मण्णी निन्ना तेगयल पट्टिरु मरली मण्णीगे नासेरुवे मण्णी निन्ना तेगयल पट्टिरु मरली मण्णीगे नासेरुवे मन्नादनन्ना महिमयागिसलु निन्न माहिमयत चीसुवे मन्नादनन्ना महिमयागिसलु निन्न माहिमयत चीसिवे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना यहूदर हृदय राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना भरलिर वारन राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना यहूदर हृदय राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना भरलिर वारन राजनीरे नाथा पिनडयुव मेले निन्ग्रपयिन्ना सरिपड़िसिरुवे नाथा पिनडयुव मेले निन्ग्रपयिन्ना सरिपड़िसिरुवे नंकालगड़सिरपड़िसिर इन्नल्लों निगे नड़यलुक्र पिनीरे इरिदे नंकालगड़सिरपड़िसिर इन्नल्लों निगे नड़यलुक्र पिनीरे इरिदे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना यहूदर हृदय राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना भरलिर वारन राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना यहूदर हृदय राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना भरलिर वारन राजनीरे ननगिरु भोबयकेयल्ला ननगिरु भोबयकेयल्ला नंकोने उसिरु ईरवावलेगु निन्न नामो सर्वदुंधे नंकोने उसिरु ईरवावलेगु निन्न नामो सर्वदुंधे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना यहूदर हृदय राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना भरलिर वारन राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना यहूदर हृदय राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना भरलिर वारन राजनीरे नंचिकरदयादि अत्युन्नतनाधाना ओढ़िदानन पात्रया कुंबारन बड़ितंदु सरिमाडलु कोरुवे नंचिकरदयादि अत्युन्नतनाधाना ओढ़िदानन पात्रया कुंबारन बड़ितंदु सरिमाडलु कोरुवे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना यहूदर हृदय राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना भरलिर वारन राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना यहूदर हृदय राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना भरलिर वारन राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना यहूदर हृदय राजनीरे ओहो सन्ना ओहो सन्ना भरलिर वारन राजनीरे
आगे प्रियरे नाव एडबिडदे देवर नाराधिसोण नमकण्डगड़न मुच्ची नव सल्पसमयवत्तु देवरनु उडुक्वंत्वर रागिरोण ईमुंचाने देवर प्रसन्नतियु नमन्न नडस्वा आगे ईवंदु महिलर कूट्टदली देवर आस्तनमण्डिगितु देवर प्रसन्नतेन नम्म नडस्वा आगे नव एल्लरु सल्पसमयवत्तु नम्म रुदयगण नट्टु गुड़सी नव एल्लर यथु निंतुकण्डु देवरिया कवरवन सूचित्र निमित्तिदिन्दा नव प्रत्योपरु प्रियरे यथु निंतुकण्डु देवरन आराधिसोण देवर नमिकोट्टाई वंदु चिक्कर रुदयदिन्दा आत्नन आराधिसोण नव वडंत पात्रयागित्यव प्रियरे आत्तन ताने कुंबारन आगितु नमन्न रूपिसी नम्म चित्रिसी नम्म नडसिदंता देवरु आत्तन आगिताने नव एन इल्ला तवर आगित्यव नव शून्यवाद नम्म जीवित्वन्ना आत्तन ताने ईतिन तुम्बिसी तन्न कृपयली नम्म नडसी ईस्तित्यली नम्म इटिरुदक कागे देवरिया कृतकनते सल्लसुत्ता सल्पसमयवत्तु देवरन आराधनमाडोण प्रियरे याकंदर देवरु इदुवर्गु नम्म एल्लर जीवित्तदली आत्तन वल्लयवन आगितु नम्म नडसुत्ता बंदिरुदक कागे देवरे निनगे स्तोत्रप्पा देवरे ईमुंचाने नन रुदयवन तरदु स्वामी नान निनन आराधिस्तेनेम्बुदागी नम्म रुदयगण नट्टरदु नव रुदय पूर्कवागी देवरन आराधिसोण याकंदर देवर वाक्यदल नोडुत्तेवे निव देवरन आराधिसुदा दरे निम आत्म प्राण शरीरगण्ना आत्तन रूपिसी आराधिसरियम्बुदागी अव्दु प्रियरे आत्तन ईरित्यागेणत्तनल्ला नाने मार्गवु सत्यवु जीववागित्येनेम्बुदागी ईमुंचाने देवरु ताने नम्म मध्यदली नम्मगे मार्गदर्शकन आगितु नम्मगे जीववन्न तुम्बिसी नम्मगे बोधकन आगितु नडस्वा आगे आत्तन मार्गदर्शनवन्ना नव केलिकोलुत्ता ईसमयदल नव प्रत्योपरु नम्म भाईगण नट्टरदु नम्म रुदय पूर्कवागी सल्पसमयवत्तु आत्तनली कालारणमाडुवंत्वर रागिरोण प्रियरे ईमुंचाने नव यावदे परस्तितिन्दा बंदिरबौदु एन अगत्तिदिन्दा बंदिरबौदु अव एल्लवगण नव सल्पवत्तु कर्तनाद देवर देवरसन्निधानदली नव बदेगितु देवरनु उडुक्वंत्वर रागिरोण प्रियरे याकंदर ईमुंचाने नव देवरनु उडुक्वुदा दरे आत्तन ताने नम्म एल्ला परस्तितिगण मेले आत्तन चयकोडवा देवर आगिताने आत्तन ताने नम्मगे चयपरित्त जीवित्वन्ना ईग आगले कोटंता देवर आगिताने प्रियरे ईसमयदली देवरे निनगे स्तोत्रप्पा देवरे नान निनन मनपुर्कवागी निनन आराधिस्लिक्य सहायमाडयम्बुदागी देवर सहायदा आस्तवन्ना केलिकोलुत्ता आत्तनन आराधिसोण ईमुंचाने नम्म दृष्टियन्ना परलोकद कड़ेगन नव अरिस्सी आत्तनन उडुक्वाग प्रियरे आत्तनन दृष्टसुवाग आत्तनसह परलोकदिन्दा नम्मन नोडुवंत्व देवर आगिताने ईमुंचाने परलोकदिन्दा आत्तन दृष्टियु नम्म कड़ीग अरिस्सुवा आगे आत्तनली केलिकोल्लोण अप्पा इगो कर्तने नन कण्डगण नेत्ती नान निन्न नोडुत्तेने स्वामी नान निन्न ने उडुक्त्तेन अप्पा मनपुर्कवागी नान निनन उडुक्त्तेने स्वामी मतंदु सारी नम्म मध्यदली निल्डु बार अप्पा नम्म रुदयदली मतंदु सारी नु बाह कर्तनेम्बुदागी नम्म भाईगण नट्टरदु केलुवाग प्रियरे आत्तन ताने ईमुंचाने तन्न प्रसन्नतियली नम्मन नडसलु शक्तनाद देवरु आत्तन आगिताने हालेलुया स्तोत्र देवरे स्तोत्रप्पा अव्दु प्रियरे एन इल्ला दंता नम्मन्ना आत्तन ताने तन्न कृपयिन्दा नम्म नडसिदा देवर आगिताने हालेलुया स्तोत्र यसुवे स्तोत्रप्पा स्तोत्र राचने हालेलुया अप्पा निम्मगे कृतकनते स्वामी ईमुंचाने निन कृतकनते सल्लस्तेवे ईवंदु अवकाशवन्ना नम्म एल्लरगिन निन कोटिडियल्ला अप्पा अदकागे निनगे स्तोत्र हालेलुया स्तोत्रतंदे स्तोत्र यसुवे स्तोत्र पवित्र आत्मने
शून्यवागित्ता नन्ना नूरक्य नूर रस्टुवाडी योत्यालिंदु नन्न परिदतु निन्ना कृपयल्लावे प्रत्योपनाडोण प्रियरे शून्यवागित्ता नन्ना नूरक्य नूर रस्टुवाडी योत्यालिंदु नन्न परिदतु निन्ना कृपयल्लावे गणदेखे बारदंता नन्ना गणनया माडितु निंग्रपय यावा गणदेखे बारदंता नन्ना गणनया माडितु निंग्रपय कृपेले कृपेले कृपे ईसुअप्पा एल्लानित्ता कृपे कृपेले कृपेले कृपे ईसुअप्पा एल्लानित्ता कृपे मतंदु सारी कृपे कृपेले कृपेले कृपे ईसुअप्पा एल्लानित्ता कृपे कृपेले कृपेले कृपे ईसुअप्पा एल्लानित्ता कृपे नन्न जीवना सदुतिरुदु नन्ना वलदिन्दल्ला नादन्नलीरदे उसिरारुदु नन्न स्वामत्यदिन्दल्ला नचिवला नन्ह जीरा साधु तिरुवगु नन्हा बलविंदल्ला नामन्नलिरदे उसिराडु नन्ह स्वामत्य दिंदल्ला गणने बारदंता नन्ना गणने यामाडितु निन्ही कृपये याव गणने गुबारदा नमन याव गुबारदा गितंता नमन देवर ताने तन्न कृपये नमन नडसिदा इदुवर्गु तन्न कृपये नडसिदा देवरु मुंद इस्तहा तन्न कृपये नडसुवा हागे आत्तन निकेलिकोल्लुत्ता रुदय पूर्कवागी देवरे निन्ह कृपया आगिस्तोत्र अंबुदागी देवर नालागिसुवना कृपये 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 ईसुअप्पा एलानित्ता कृपये मतंदु सारी कृपये 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 ईसुअप्पा एलानित्ता कृपये 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 ईसुअप्पा एलानित्ता कृपये अवधु स्वामी देवरे नमचीवित्तवु देवरे नमस्वंत बलदिंदा इल्ला अप्पा देवरे निन्ह बलदिंदले नाव इमुन छाने ईरित्यागि निंतु देवे देवरे निन्ह पात्र सन्निधानदल्ला ईरित्यागि निंतु रुदादरे अदि निन्ह कृपये देवरे निन्ह करुणे कर्तने अवधु प्रियरे इमुन छाने नमा भाई नतरयोना आत्तन कृपया गिस्तोत्र सल्लिसुवना अवधु प्रियरे आत्तन नमचीवित्तदल्ले बरदित्तरे नमचीवित्तवु एन आगुत्तिदवु कोत्तिल्ला आदरे तान आत्तन ताने नमन आरसीकोंडु तन्न मक्कणागी माडिकोंडु तन्न कृपयली आत्तन इदुवर्गु नडस्तिरुदक कागे देवरे निन्हेगे स्तोत्र अंबुदागी देवरी कृतकनते सल्लिसुवना नाव आत्तनिके मक्कण प्रियरे आत्तन ताने नमके तंदय आगितु नमन पोषिसुत्ता नमन नडस्तिरुदक कागे आत्तनिके कृतकनते सल्लिसुवना हालेलुया स्तोत्रप्पा अवधु प्रियरे नमा भाईगण नतरयोना नाव यार सुम्मा निल्ला दबेर्दा नम अक्कपकदर एन अंकल्तर नमन नोड़य अंदुकोल्ला दबेर्दा प्रियरे इमुन छाने नाव चीव सरपनाद देवरण्णा आराधनमाडिके बंदिदेवे नाव आराधिसुवागा इमुन छाने आत्तन नमा आराधिली आत्तन महिले वंदिकोल्लुवा देवर आगित्याने आत्तन ताने नमा आराधनिके योख्यन आगितु वड़यन आगितु एचमानन आगितु नमन नडसुवा हागे आत्तनल्ली केलिकोल्लोना देवर ताने इमुन छाने नमम मुंदागी ओगुवा हागे आत्तनल्ली केलिकोल्लोना प्रियरे हालेलुया स्तोत्र यशुवे अप्पा नम मुंदागी ओगुवात्तले नमसंगड़ इरुवा देवर निन्हेगे स्तोत्र इगो दस्माप्तिवर्गु एल्ला दिवस सन्निम संगड़ इरुत्तनंता वाग्तनमाडिदात्तले अप्पा निन्ह यावागल नमसंगड़ ईतु नमन नडस्त्या अप्पा दक्का गिस्तोत्र स्तोत्र यशुवे कृतकनते अप्पा निन्हेगे महिमे यशुवे हालेलुया हालेलुया यशुवे हालेलुया ओ हालेलुया रवश्वरलंदर यशुवे स्तोत्रप्पा देवरे निमके कृतकनते स्वामी हालेलुया हालेलुया तंदे देवा तंदे देवा नन्ह सर्वनीनया नीनित्तर नरागे साकु तंदे देवा तंदे देवा नन्ह सर्वनीनया नीनित्तर नरागे साकु नन्ह प्रियने नन्ह प्राणवे निन्ह आराधिसुवे नन्ह जीववे नन्ह स्नेहवे निन्ह आराधिसुवे नन्ह प्रियने नन्ह प्राणवे निन्ह आराधिसुवे नन्ह जीववे नन्ह स्नेहवे निन्ह आराधिसुवे तंदे देवा नन्ह रंदवे निमड़ीलल्ली नन्ह गुसुकु तंदे देवा नन्ह रंदवे निमड़ीलल्ली नन्ह गुसुकु तंदे देवा तंदे देवा नन्ह सर्वनीनया नीनित्तर नरागे साकु तंदे देवा तंदे देवा नन्ह सर्वनीनया नीनित्तर नरागे साकु निन्ह प्रीतिवरणीसलु नन्ह निन्ह सालदया निन्ह कार्यवरणीसलु एई पदुकु सालदया निन्ह प्रीतिवरणीसलु नन्ह निन्ह सालदया निन्ह कार्यवरणीसलु एई पदुकु सालदया तंदे देवा नन्ह रंदवे निमड़ीलल्ली नन्ह गुसुकु अवधु स्वामी तंदे देवा नन्ह रंदवे निमड़ीलल्ली नन्ह गुसुकु तंदे देवा तंदे देवा नन्ह सर्वनीनया नीनित्तर नरागे साकु तंदे देवा तंदे देवा नन्ह सर्वनीनया नीनित्तर नरागे साकु नन्ह प्राणपूर्तने निन्ह सन्निदिपरिमलवो सही चेने गिन्तनिन्ना प्रीति इस्टु मधुरा नन्ह प्राणस्नेहितने निन्ह सन्निदिपरिमलवो सही चेने गिन्तनिन्ना प्रीति इस्टु मधुरा तंदे देवा नन्ह रंदवे निमड़ीलल्ली नन्ह गुसुकु तंदे देवा नन्ह रंदवे निमड़ीलल्ली नन्ह गुसुकु तंदे देवा नन्ह रंदवे निमड़ीलल्ली नन्ह गुसुकु तंदे देवा नन्ह रंदवे मन पूर्कवागी प्रियरे निमड़ीलल्ली नन्ह गुसुकु तंदे देवा तंदे देवा नन्ह सर्वनीनया नीनित्तर नरागे साकु तंदे देवा तंदे देवा नन्ह सर्वनीनया नीनित्तर नरागे साकु मतंदु सारी तंदे देवा तंदे देवा तंदे देवा नन्ह सर्वनीनया नीनित्तर नरागे साकु तंदे देवा तंदे देवा नन्ह सर्वनीनया नीनित्तर नरागे साकु हालेलुया यशुवे हालेलुया अप्पा निमके स्तोत्र 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 यशुवे हालेलुया अप्पा इमुन छाने निन्ह ताने नमके सर्वमु स्वामी नमा प्राण प्रियनु निन अप्पा नीने नमके स्नेहितनु देवरे अप्पा निन्ह मड़ीलल्ले स्वामी नमके आनंद स्वामी कर्तन निन्ह एलिदियल्ला ताई निमन संतैसुवा रीतियली नानिमन संतैस्तने अंबुदागी तंदय पोषिसुवा रीतियली नानिमन पोषिस्तने अंबुदागी प्रियरे इमुन छाने नमा भाईगण नतरदे लोना देवरे निन्ह नमके बेकप्पा देवरे निन्ह नमके बेकु स्वामी नमके न्यच्चु चागि निन्ह बेकप्पा अवधु प्रियरे इमुन छाने नमा भाईगण नतरदु केलिकोल्लुवागा आत्तन ताने तन्न प्रसन्नत्यली नमन मतंदु सारी तुम्बिसुवा देवर आगित्याने इमुन छाने देवर प्रसन्नत्यू नमम मध्यदल्ली इरुवंत दागिदे देवर प्रसन्नत्यू नमम मध्यदल्ली चलिसुवंत दागिदे प्रियरे नमरुदयगण नतरदु आत्तनन आराधिसुवागा आत्तन ताने नमन मतंदु सारी तुम्बिसुवा देवर आगित्याने याकंदर देवर वाक्यदल नोडुत्तेवे अगलवागी भाई तेरेरे नाम तुम्बिस्तने अंबुदागी इमुन छाने देवर तुम्बिस्विक्ये नमन ओपिसीकोडोना कर्तन प्रसन्नत्यू नमन आवरिसी नमन नडसुवा हागे आत्तनल्ली केलिकोल्लोना प्रियरे हालेलुया स्तोत्र यशुवे स्तोत्रप्पा ओ रवश्वरलंदर रबरी करला बाबा हालेलुया स्तोत्र यशुवे स्तोत्रप्पा देवरे नमम मध्यदल्ली संचरिसुवात्तले निन्हेगे स्तोत्रप्पा इमुन छाने निन्ह स्पर्श नमके बेकु कर्तने निन्ह स्पर्श दिंदा नम एलर नस्पर्शसु देवरे हालेलुया कृतकनते अप्पा बेकु स्वामी नीन बेकु देवरे नमके नीन इल्ला देवर नमके हारी इल्ला अप्पा नीन नमके चागि बेकु पवित्र आत्मने निन्ह प्रसन्नत्य इल्ला देव नाव एन माडुलु साद्य इल्ला अप्पा निन्ह अभिषेक देवर नमके बेकु मतंदु सारी तुम्बिसुप्पा देवरे देवरे निन्ह तुम्बिस्विक्ये नमन नाव समर्पिस्तेवे कर्तने आळ्विक्य माडया इमुन छाने निन्ह आळ्विक्य इल्लुदु बरली कर्तने हालेलुया कृतकनते अप्पा स्वामी कृतकनते देवरे हालेलुया स्तोत्र यशुवे स्तोत्र हालेलुया हालेलुया स्तोत्र यशुवे पवित्र आत्मने निन्हेगे स्तोत्र हालेलुया कृतकनते अप्पा कृतकनते स्वामी हालेलुया स्तोत्र स्तोत्र यशुवे स्तोत्र हालेलुया स्तोत्र तंदे देवर प्रसन्नत्य इल्लिलिदु बरुतिदे प्रत्योपराडोना प्रियरे देवर प्रसन्नत्य नमम मध्यदल्ली इल्लुदु बरली हागे आत्तनल्ली केलिकोल्लुत्ता आत्तन आराधिसुवना इल्लिलिदु बरुतिदे मतंदु सारी देवर इत्ता हिमे नमन निल्ला परिशोध सालदय आवर सिद्ध देवर इत्ता हिमे नमन निल्ला परिशोध सालदय आवर सिद्ध देवर इत्ता हिमे नमन निल्ला परिशोध सालदय आवर सिद्ध देवरा दिव्यदु तरु नम्म सुत्तलु इल्लिरु बरु देवरा दिव्यदु तरु नम्म सुत्तलु इल्लिरु बरु देवर इत्ता हिमे नमन निल्ला परिशोध सालदय आवर सिद्ध देवर इत्ता हिमे नमन निल्ला परिशोध सालदय आवर सिद्ध स्तोत्र यशु स्तोत्र कर्तन सर्वशक्तनाद तंदे देवरे स्तोत्रुलय स्तोत्रुल स्वामी निम प्रसन्नत्य ने स्वामी काडुवल्द कृपे कटरे देखा गिस्तोत्रु राजने आराधनली स्वामी निम महिमे वंदिकोंडी दिरकर्तने इगो राजने निम राज्य के नीति गागी स्वामी आत्मगण तवकोल्लोर आगितु कर्तने इगो राजने खायोंता रागिरवा स्वामी सीनाय बट्टदल लेडु बंदात्तने एल सभ्यगण मध्यदल्ली तिरगाडुवात्तने ई समयदल्ले निम प्रसन्न मुकदिंदा कर्तने सभ्यागि कुड़ी बंदरमेल एलरमेल स्वामी निम अभिषेक एडु बरली कर्तने आश्रस्यंतन आगिरु बलपड़सुंतन आगिरु कर्तने वरदागि बंदिर आत्मगण स्वामी अप्पा कर्तन निम वाक्य दिंदा तुम्बिसी कर्तने अव पलबरित्तवागितु कर्तने अवके जीव उंटागी कर्तने अव स्वामी कार्यरूपके बरवेखागी बेडिकोल्लुत्तने कर्तने बंदिरवंत आदित्य पोदुकरण स्वामी निम कायगल ओपिसीकोडत्ति देने कर्तने नीवे मात्नाड़वेखागी बेडिकोल्लुत्तने कर्तने निम अभिषेक एडु बरली कर्तने निम प्रसन्न मुकदिंदा स्वामी दीनरण नैन्पमाडिकोल्लुवेखागी बेडिकोल्लुत्तेवे कर्तने बंदिर एलर निम कायगल ओपिसित्ता कर्तने मुंद निन्ह भागवन स्वामी निम पवित्र आत्मन आळ्विक्यली नेडस्कोड़बेखागी नमके नुट्टीसुवात्तनु पूरे सुवात्तनंता एसु कृष्टन नमुल का बेडोंतर आगी देवे तंदे अमेन अमेन
हालेलुया देवर नामके महिमे उंटागली इवत्तु नाव वेलरु ईरित्यागि सेरी बरलिके उन्द कारण एन अंतंद्रे कल्द यरडु दिवसगण हिंदे अंद्र एंटने तारीकु इडी विश्ववेला महिलयर दिनाचिरणे ना आचरिसिदु नमके एलर गुगोत्तो अदे रीतियली इवत्तु नावगण कोड़ा सभ्यागि सेरी महिलयर दिनाचिरणे ना आचरिस सभ्य केम्बुदागी नाव तीर्मानिसिद्यवु याकंतंद्रे महिलयरु देवर राज्यदल्ली नाव एन आगिदेवे यार आगिदेवे एन्दु तिल्लुदुकोल्लोदु बहला प्रामिक्यवादद्दो देवर वाक्य एन हेल्लत्य अंतंद्रे नाव देवर दृष्टियली अमूल्यरु मान्यरु प्रियरु आगिदेवे अंबुदागी अवधु देवरु नमन यावरीत्यागि नोडुत्तारंतंद्रे नाव बेले उल्लवरु मान्यरु प्रियरु स्रेष्ठरु जयशालिगणु ईरित्यागि देवर नमन नोडुवात्तन आगित्याने मत्ते नम्म कुरितागिरुआ आ देवर वंदु उद्देश्य एन इदियल्ला अदन्ना नम्म जीवित्तद मुखांतरा देवरु नेरवेरिस्ता बेकेम्बुदागी इवत्तु देवरु नम एलर ना आरसीकोंडी दाने Adukkoskrave andre, idana naavu innuspashtavagitilidukolabekhembadagi. Devaru namana irithiyagi vattagisere. Adarinda devaravakyadamukhaantaravagin namana balapadisalike, uttejisalike. Devaravakyadali namana nadisalike ivaththu atitibodukkuro kodanamamadhyadali daray. Haagie, ivandhu kootavanana nadisabekkinta alochisi, thirmanisi. Adikebekadanta ellayairpartigalannamadidanta ha. Namasabeya sabapalakarada Premkumar Ayanavaranukuda. Nanukristaysivina namadalli nanswagatisuvagidene. Aderithi ivaththina sandeshada bhashantakrakkaragirvantha. Devasevakaradanta sahodar Joshua Avaranukuda. Nanuesukristana namadalli swagatisuvagidene. Adarante namamadhyadali anekaddevasevargalapathniyari daray antanan bavustene. Neevugulu devittuyellali iddiro, nimmanimasthaladali neevyyedudinintukolluvadaadre. Nimmananavu priethiindaswagatisi gauravisuvagidhavu. Devittu sabapalakragalapathniyaru, yelliadiadru iddare. Devittu nimasthaladali neevyyedudinintukollabekhembadagi keelutene. Adarante ivaththu ivandhu kootake, berebere sabegalindha anekasahodriyarubandhidare. Halligalindha anekarubandhidare. Nimallarananano priethiindaeesukristana namadalli swagatisuvagidene. Haagie naavu visheshachetanarigiaavana kotidhavi. Avurubandhidera illantagothila bandhidare. Nimmanukuda nanuesukristana namadalli swagatisuvagidene. Aderithiyalli namamadhyadali devara jotekelisadavaraada anekasahodarari daray. Nimmanukuda nanuesukristana namadalli swagatisuvagidene. Konne idhagi mattundavarti ilisereeruvantaha nimallaranapratyobharaanachikavuru doduvaridudu. Pratyobharaanana nanuesukristana namadalli swagatisuvagidene. Mahimeyuntagali.
A very good morning to all of you dear beautiful ladies.
Iliserebandiravantha ellapriya hagu sundaravada strierige kartanada esukristana esernalli swagatsuvagidhavu.
We are very glad to host this Women's Day 2023.
Iyadasa orda ipatmorenesali na mahila dinacharane andkootavanana aijisuvudu. Namah ashataikavada sangatiyage.
See the intent of hosting this meeting is.
Iykootavanana aijisuvadhanindana namamukya udeshavenendare.
Is to recognize and reinforce the purpose of God's creation that is women.
Devaru strieranussustisuvadhanindana udeshavanu gurthisuvudu. Matthu balabarhisuvude iyikootada udeshavagidhavu.
Women are created by God and in His image.
Mahileyarna strieranna devaru tanna holikeanteh, tanasaruppeuvavaraagisrustisidhane.
Women play a crucial role in building the families which is the building block of a nation.
Undhrashada nirmaanakatakagalaadukkutumbakalannu kattuvadharali mahileyaru bahunirunaika pathravanana vaisuttare.
Women are unique in many ways.
Mahileyaru anekavidhanagali anannyeragidhavu.
We are tender caregivers yet fierce protectors.
Naavu koamalathenindharaikeemaduvavaru, adaru ugra rakshakaru.
We are gentle but yet resilient.
Naavu saumesa bavadavaru, adare stithistapakaru.
We are caring yet discerning.
Naavu collegeemaduvavaru, adare vivacheneullavaru.
We are beautiful yet dignified.
Naavu saundarriyullavaru, adaru ganathayullavaru.
We are all makers but yet leaders in marketplace.
Naavu manekattuvagroiniyaru, adare ellakarikshetrakali naykaruagidhavu.
A woman is symbol of love, strength, wisdom and character.
Strieru priethi, bal, nyan, matthu gunada pratikavagidhavu.
We are equal in the side of God.
Naavu devara drishtali samanaragidhavu.
By stating that, we do not fight or compete with other men.
Irithi heduvadalli naavu bere purusharondige jagalavadi athova avarondige naavusparthisuvudilla.
And most importantly, we do not compete and compare with other women.
Agu bahumukyavagibere mahileyarondige strierondige naavu sparthisi holike madikoluvudilla.
So on this special day, we want to recognize, honor and celebrate this beautiful gift of God that is you.
Adarinda iyidina naavu devarsundaravadasrustiyadanta mahileyarna acharisi, gurthisi, avranagauravisuvantakarivana madlikidhavu.
So on this special day, we also want to recognize and appreciate and honor special segment of women.
Idalladhey iyidina naavu ivandhumahileyargumpali visheshavibhagavagiruvanta keluvstrieranna gaurvislikidhavu.
Can we request all the women sixty years and above to kindly stand up and come forward? Sixty years and above.
Arvathu varsha mailpattina ellamahileyarna strieranna naminantisikolutteve mundebandhusalaginnitukoldri.
Sixty years and if you're shy to disclose your age, but doesn't matter. It's an honorable age. We request every woman sixty years and above to kindly come and line up in the front. You can turn towards them.
Dayamadi arvathu varsha mailpatthanta ellastrieru mundebaramekhagino keelikoltteve.
Sixty years and above.
Arvathu varsha mailpatthanta ellamahiley.
Could you please stand? Only sixty years and above.
Kevala arvathu varsha mailpatthanta strieru.
Mathra. Sixty years. Can we give them a warm round of appreciation and applause for them?
Ellaruchappalayundige varanna swagatisuvana.
We are thankful for your years of love, hard work and experience.
Nimallara bahu varshagala shama kagyu, nimallara priethi kagyu, hago nimanubavakagyu nakrutagnathayullavaraagidhavu.
And can I request our younger women to kindly appreciate them, felicitate them?
Iliruvanta yavana strieru bandhu ivarallanugauravisisammanisalulu nakurthteve.
Can we put our hands together for this young elderly mothers?
Ellaruchappalayundige ivarana sammanisuvana priyare gauravisuvana.
Some of these people have seen and raised two generations.
Iliruvanta kelavaru eredakintaluhetchina santatigalanna nodittare, belisittare.
We respect and honor them today.
Iyidina varanna gauravishteve, varanna naavugurthisuttaitteve.
We are thankful for your prayers, love and wisdom.
Nimallara prarthane kagyu, priethi kagyu, matthu nyanakagyu naavukrutagnathayullavaraagidhavu.
We pray and ask God to give them long life and a healthy life.
Ellargu kodakevaru sundaravadanta bundhinabadukannu varishavanapoduvanteh, matthu santosha karvadajivanapoduvanteh na prarthisuvana.
I request Pastor Premkumar to come forward and pray for these women.
Namasabapalakarada Pastor Premkumar Ayanavaru mundebandhu ivaralligagiprarthisabekkendu vinantisikolutteve.
Navellaru namma akaygalannu iyiriyaa sahodriyarakalege kaiachachi devaru maadhirua. Upakaravannelisi istu varshagalu, avarkutumbakke sabeg, samajakke sreshtrakolegiagiddakaghi. Devarige stotrasalisuttaa naprathisuvana. Priti sorupanada tandiyadu devare. Namamadhyadali ruva iyiriyaa sahodriyari kagyi thayandari kagyi stotrasalistevappa. Avarajumana uddaku ninasta avaranadisikotadakaghi stotrappa. Avaru kutumbaku, samajaku, sabegu, sreshtvada pathravagiddu avaranupiyogista bandidiyaa. Avarajivitagalali neenmadutabanda ellasangatikaghi stotrappa. I vaysaadakhaladalu neenavarige aashrayavagidiyappa. Adakaghi naavu stotrasalistevi. Ninnavakyaalattappa, muppina prayadavaregu naanimige adharanagidene. Naanimanu ottu sagisalutene antreedyappaa. Avurthamchitadalli patthayella prayasakaghi stotrappa. Devare kaniirukastadinda kutumbavaneebbisi daray. Sabeg, tamapathravanasalisidharay. Adakarana ivelaeli navellaru devare avarige kritagnathasalisi ninakayalli arpisdevappa. Idu varagu kapadida devaru inumundesaa ebbinejaragiddu avaranakadunadisthaaninta. Anekayavanastrieranu devarabaliyali nadisuvavektigalagi avarumundesagalike. Devara rajaadali avarinnupathramuntanta thidudu mundorilike krupakolu. Ninnabalavadaastake vaysutta najreethina esukristana eserinalli naavbeditthavitande, ameen, ameen.
Thank you Pastor and thank you very much dear aunties. Can we one more time give them a very warm round of applause to them?
Sabapalakarilidhavantana iyiriyaa sahodriyaru gukutagnathay, chappalayundige avarige naavugauravisuvana.
Alright, so it's my heart privilege to introduce the guest speaker for today.
Iyidina da atitibodakarananaparichaisuvudu nama sawbhagavagidhavu.
She is Evangelist Maria Frances from Bangalore.
Avaru Bengalurinindhanamamadhyadali bandiruvanta sawathikaradanta Maria Frances Ravaru.
Just a brief introduction, she and Pastor Frances are the founders of Rehaboth Media Ministries in Bangalore.
Saahodaryu matthu varapativarada Pastor Frances Ravaru Bengalurinaliruvadhaboth Media Ministry strasamstapakaragidhavu.
Yes, they first started in the year of 2006 and they were featured in Zee Kannada, Big J, New Hope TV and many more TV channels.
Avaru thamasaveenu mudalnedaghi arnaisvelli pranbisi daru, hago mudalnedaghi. Avaru Zee Kannada, Big J, New Hope TV, matthu innitare madhimagali thamasaveenna pranbisi daru.
Evangelist Maria Frances was the first woman TV speaker in Karnataka.
Sahodaryagatha Maria Frances Ravaru Karnataka.
Yes, can we applaud for that?
Dura darsana madhimada bodakaragidhavu.
She along with her husband, they administered across India and different nations of the globe.
Avaru thamapatiyundige Bharata matthu jagatikavaghi itare rashtragalaadanta thamasaveenna madutittare.
Now it's heart privilege and honor on behalf of this church, pastor and all the women present here. To welcome our dear sister Maria Frances, can we give them a warm welcome please?
Swagatisuvudu nama sabeya sabapalakaravandhu sawbhagavagidhavu.
Yes, dear aunties. And we are delighted to have a very supportive husband with us. Can we ask Pastor Frances also to come forward on the stage? We would like to recognize you and invite you. Can we put our hands together?
Sahodaryapativaru variyahahala supportmaduvatharaagidharavu, avarunkuda swagatishteve.
Thank you, yeah. So to help us with translation, we have Brother Joshua Dodumani. We really extend our appreciation and thankfulness to you. Over to you Sister Frances.
Iyagodanenenna bahashantrisalu nama madhyadali sabapalakaradanta Joshua Dodumaniavaridharay, avanukuda bandisthteve, matswagasthey.
Praise the Lord. It's such an honor to be here and I thank Pastor Prem, Sharon and the entire church for giving me this opportunity and all glory be to God.
Iliruvadike bahala santoshulavalaagidhene, matthu idyaavukashvanamadikolanda Pastor Premkumar, matthu Sharon, matthu sabeyalavugu sahanavandana hilukike baiisthana.
Praise the Lord.
Devagi stotravag.
So how many of you are happy that we are celebrating Women's Day?
Naavu mahileyara dinacharane acharistuthurukka istu jana santoshulavagidhuri.
Wow, you know I recently, you know on Women's Day, I was reading some post on the status.
Avundusstatusali mahileyadinaacharane kurithagi onsangatina vutthaidhavu.
So some men were asking why only Women's Day is celebrated, not Men's Day?
Kilru heduthadru yakikkevala mahileyadinaacharane mattharacharistada, purushardinaacharane yakchacharisudalambadagi.
So you know in one of the posts, they had put that. Men have lot of achievements than women, it cannot be celebrated in one day.
Adindha avurheduthadu purusharu sadrisavandhu anekasangatigali ide, vandhuddinadale mattharacharimadlikagudalambadagi.
Hallelujah, is that so?
Nijaana?
Is that so?
Nijaana?
No, we have God working in each one of our life.
Ila devaru namallarapratyobhuru jeevitadali kelsavana martthaidhavu.
God has made us also achievers.
Devaru nammanussa sadakaranagimadidhavu.
We are not ordinary women, but we are extraordinary women.
Naavu sadaranavagirundhamahileyaru alla badalagi, asadaranavagirundhamahileyaraagidhavu.
Come on women.
Mahileyare.
I don't like people, you know, just sitting in the church and just shaking head. I like responses.
Angya mahileyarsumnacharsalukutkuntallaladisuvundhalabadalagini, prati krisbakehembadagnanbhaiisthana.
Because only when you interact, I know everybody is not sleeping but awake.
Akandharu prati krisuvagamathanangiarthavakthada, niiddhamartthayala, naga keelthaidhurimbadagi.
How many of you are sleeping now?
Iga istu jana niiddhamartthaidhuri.
Anybody sleeping?
Yaraadu malgidi ra?
Okay, nobody is sleeping. Tell your neighbor.
Nimapakdali origi hedhri. Thatti hedhri.
Tap them.
Origi thatti hedhri.
Tell them it's time to receive blessing.
Idu ashiwadavana hondikolundusamayambadagi hedhri.
Come on, come on, tell them.
Nimapakadon thatti hedhri, ashiwadavana hondikolundusamayambadagi.
Enri, adigemane lastu jorak sound madthira, illisabdane varthilvala. Asheriyakta idu Women's Meetinga, en meetinganta? Hallelujah, come on, tell your neighbor.
Nimapakadori hedhri.
Hedhri, or nim friende tanay, hedhri. Tell your neighbor.
Nimapakadori hedhri.
It's time for your blessing.
Nimashiwadu samayidhagidhambadagi.
The time has come.
Samayabandagidhavu.
Heaven is walking right now.
Parloku, nen goskravakalsamartthaidhavu.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Let's all lift our hands right now.
Navellu namakkargalana melakettu.
Let's welcome the Holy Spirit in this place.
Istraladali pavitratmananaswagatamadikolana.
We want God to walk on our behalf.
Namamadnamaparvagidhavu devrukelsavana madli.
We want something supernatural to happen this day.
Idinadali atina esarikavagirundusangati jaragali.
We will not go from here just as we came, but we are going to be filled with the power of the Holy Spirit.
Naavu bandanasthitilav hindirigade pavitakamashakti neetumbisalputtavraginahogtive.
Ura baxshikharabala, come on lift up your voices. Come on, it's time to lift up your voices and praise the name of Jesus.
Nimasvaragala neti kartananasutimadri, kartankistotragalana hedhri.
As I entered this place, I could feel the presence of God. God is already moving in this place.
Naavu istraladale barutiruvaglikartana prasannithanannubavisikartanuiilisancharistaranusangatinannubavisthaidhavu.
God already is at work.
Devarigaglikelsavana pranbisi daray.
Angels have been assigned for each one of you.
Nimallarigoskravagidhavu devadutaru or neemisalputtidaare.
Today I can see many of you have come with so much of burden in your heart.
Ivthu anekurudimachivitadundu bharavullavaraagini ivandidiiri.
So much of problem that is going on in the inside of you.
Nimolagradanekavidavagirundhatodugalunthaktharundari thilibandidiiri.
Today God is speaking to you people.
Janrayudhu devarimandiga matthanathaidhavu.
God is telling the time has come for an upliftment.
Devaruhedhataadharu nimamelaatundusamayabandidheyambadagi.
God's power is moving in this place.
Devarusakti istraladali chalistaidhavu.
There is something extraordinary that is happening right here.
Isamadali ikshanaadali asadaranavagirundusangati jaragthaidhavu.
God's fire is moving right now.
Devarusakti istraladali sancharistaidhavu.
Come on, start speaking in tongues.
Anne bashalimathanadukipranbisi.
Ura ba 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 shakharabalaruri andaramakarabalaraba. Reba shanda, Lord let your fire, fire, fire come down in this place oh God.
Kartunistraladali neenabengkyu avarsikolali.
Every spirit of darkness.
Ella katulayatmanu.
Every spirit of witchcraft.
Ella matamandradatmanu.
Every spirit of black magic.
Ella matamandradashaktiyu.
We bind its powers in the name of Jesus.
Adarabalavunayesuraisinalli bandistheyve.
The fire right now.
Devarigale ninabengkyu.
The fire right now.
Rigale ninabengkyu.
Let your power work and come upon this place oh God.
Devaridinabengkyu, ninabalavisraladilaavarsikolali.
Many people have been delivered right now.
Isamadala anekurubidigadunthaidhuri.
There's somebody who is having back pain from so many years, not able to bend, not able to stand, not able to do anything. Sister, God's power is coming upon you right now. Receive your miracle in Jesus' name. Receive your miracle in Jesus' name. There is somebody, you know, who has uterus problem, gets excessive of bleeding, God is telling right now. Every month, it goes on for seven days. God's power is touching you, dear sister. God is healing you right now. Receive that miracle touch from heaven. Oh, thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. God's power is working right now. There's somebody, you know, you're worried about your children. They don't study well. And you are worried about them. God is telling you, sister. God's power is going to touch your children. They will be transformed. You're being praying for them. Today is a day of deliverance. Thank you, Lord. Lord, we commit this, Lord, meeting into your hands, oh God. Lord, I am just the mouthpiece of you, oh God. Today speak to your people. Let every word bring transformation. In Jesus' name. Amen. Hallelujah. So today I have a prophecy from God for each one of you. So as I was praying, you know, Sharon called me many, I mean, months back and she said, Sister, we want you to come for this meeting. So from that day, I started praying for this meeting. God said, today there is going to be some power, supernatural power, that is going to transform many women's life. You will be like a firebrand for Jesus. And the prophecy for this, every woman who is here is Proverbs 31 and verse 10. The Bible says she is worth far more than rubies. So that means today, every woman, you have been, you know, not given that value at home, God is saying that you are going to be a woman of value in the sight of everyone. I'm saying again. You are of value. Yeah. So there is no respect, right? Sometimes women don't get that respect. But from today. God's power is working in your life. You are a person of value. Come on, lift your hands and say, I receive it. I receive, I am valuable. I am precious. I am important in the presence of God. Hallelujah. From today, God is telling you. That her husband has full confidence in her. So that means. Your husband is going to trust you. Your husband is going to give you that value. You will be taken to the next level. Hallelujah. No woman is happy, I think they want to be just like that. You don't want that value at home? Every time, you know, her husband takes decision, he takes it by his own. But when he gives, when he trusts you, you become important to him. You become important to him. Okay, in the morning, you know, you're giving your family a big hand. So from today, in your family, you are that most important person, where your husband is going to value you. Praise the Lord. Hallelujah. So the second promise what God is giving you is. Godly women is a women of virtue. That means you will have godly values. Not only that, you will be set high standards. Verse 26 says. She speaks with wisdom and faithful instructions on her tongue. From today, whatever you speak. There will be so much of wisdom that you are going to instruct your children. You're going to instruct other people and that will take you to the next level. And not only that, whatever hard work in verse, verse 15, it says, whatever hard work you did till today, you will receive the price for that. Many of the women are not to be seen because even though they work till late night, there's no value for that. But now the time has come, God is going to take you to that level of giving you the respect, giving you the honour and not only that, when you talk, people will be blessed. And the third prophecy what God said to each and every woman here. Godly women will be a women of strength and dignity. Can you read that verse, brother? Proverbs 31:25. See, that is what you will be having dignity, that means ganate. Praise the Lord. Hallelujah. Many a time, women are let down. But the Bible tells that every woman will be clothed with strength and dignity from today on. Hallelujah. Can you lift your hands and say, I receive the strength and dignity? I receive honour, I receive godly values. This is my portion in Jesus' name. Hallelujah. See, you know, when any gift is being given. What you do? You'll run and come and take the gift, right? Come on. Yes, right. When something is given freely, so what you need to do? You need to receive it. Even when the word of God is being given to you. When, you know, God is telling you that you will be a woman of honour, women of dignity, women of godly values, you will be valuable. You are like, ah, okay. Only those who receive shall be blessed. You know, I, what I do is, you know, when I became a believer. Whenever I and my husband used to go to church with children. My husband puts one condition. Go and occupy the front row. You should sit in the first row, otherwise finished, I'll get nice shoutings from him. So for that, you know, I have to run and come make space and somehow occupy the front row. And you know why he tells that is because when we are listening to the word of God, what happens is, we are not seeing this side and that side and we are putting godly values to our children and not only that, we are receiving the word of God. So anytime you come to church. It is so important. That we need to receive the word. Only when you receive it, that is yours. But if you sit, you just keep doing, it passes away, goes to the next person. Come on, say to your neighbour. Till now. You received prophecy. Now? 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 Now, are you ready for the word? Are you ready? My message is not going to finish today. Because I have a long message to preach. Are you ready? Praise the Lord. Now life is coming. Praise the Lord. So today I was asking God, what do I need to speak to the people? See, for everyone, not only for women and for men, these things are important. Come on, say, right place. Come on, say, right place. Right connection. Right vision. Right plan. Hello. Right place. Come on, repeat it with me, right place. Right connection. Right vision. Right plan. So in the first half, I will speak about right place and right connection. And I think in the second half, I'm going to speak the other two. If you are here today, you are not here by accident. God is speaking to you about the right place. Right place is so important in life. Many a times, people dig borewells, right? You have heard, right? So what they do, they just set, see the place and they dig the borewell. My God, no water. Why? Wrong place. If you dig in the right place only, you will get water. Only when you are in the right place, you receive rightful blessings. Okay, forget about borewell, this is men's things. We'll go to shopping. Shopping, every woman loves shopping, right? What we do sometimes? We go to a place. We buy something. And then we are coming out. And we see another shop. My God, same dress, here we are getting hundred rupees less. Then what we think, oh, wrong place. Now we can't return it also. That is what happens in real life. When we don't step into the right place, we end up doing wrong things. Think about the prodigal son. What did he do? His father's house was the right place. What he will do? He will take all the property. Everything and he'll go to the wrong place. What will happen? Everybody knows right about the prodigal son. Everybody knows, right? What happens when he goes to the wrong place? He will end up losing everything. So right place is very important. Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. Are you in the right place? Okay, let's see that in the Bible. Genesis chapter 27 and 28. We see about Jacob. We know his story. Jacob robbed his brother Esau's blessing, which God, which his son, which his father had prepared for him. And then what happened to Jacob? Out of fear of Esau, he wanted to run away and he wanted to go to another place. So while he was on the journey, he encountered with God. His encounter with God reminded Jacob his covenant with his father, grandfather, Isaac and Abraham. So here, what happened is, he, God assured him that God will never leave him nor forsake him, that God is with him wherever he goes. And what was that place that Jacob encountered? What was that place in the Bible? He named it as Bethel. Praise the Lord. That was the right place Jacob encountered with. Everybody knows what is Bethel. Bethel means house of God. So today, where you and I are? We are in the house of God. So are we in the right place, people of God? Hello, are we in the right place? We are in the house of God, that is Bethel, and we are going to encounter, like how Jacob encountered God. Today you and I are going to encounter God. So what happened at Bethel? Jacob encountered God. Today, how many of you want to have this experience, meeting with God face to face? How many of you want to receive that experience? My Jesus is the same yesterday, today and forever and he is right here to meet with you this day. So today, you are going to meet with God, like how Jacob experienced God. You are going to meet with God. So what happens at Bethel? What happened to Jacob at Bethel? The same thing is going to happen to you today as you are seated in the right place at the right time. God is going to do these things in your life. Come on, read with me, Genesis chapter 28 and verse 13. Adakeh avna thayu avanige. Nana magane, nina shopavu nana mele irali. 28:13. Nina tandeyada abrahamana kartunada devaru, isakana devaru naane. Nino malagirua bumienu, ninagu, ninasantatigu koduvenu. Hallelujah. What is God doing there for Jacob? God is making a covenant with him. Hallelujah. A covenant is not going to break. A covenant is not going to break in our life, because it is a God-made covenant for you and I.
What is wrong?
Hallelujah. So what is the new covenant that we have through Jesus Christ?
What is wrong?
Today, God is telling to each one of you in Matthew twenty-six and twenty-eight, God forgives all of our sins.
What is wrong?
This is the covenant that God is making with you, church.
What is wrong?
And the second thing what God is doing is, God remembers our sin no more, according to Hebrews, chapter eight and verse twelve.
What is wrong?
And the third covenant that God is making with you is, God qualifies us.
What is wrong?
Let's read that in Colossians, chapter one and verse twelve. Colossians, chapter one and verse twelve.
What is wrong? In the beginning, the Lord gave us a message. What is wrong?
He qualifies us.
What is wrong?
That we can stand in any situation.
What is wrong?
And the fourth covenant that Jesus is making with us is,
What is wrong?
Romans eight thirty-nine.
What is wrong?
Philippines three twelve.
What is wrong?
Jesus takes hold of us and he will never let you go.
What is wrong?
Never you are alone.
What is wrong?
Come on, tell to your neighbor.
What is wrong?
You are not alone.
What is wrong?
Every time,
What is wrong?
Jesus is with you.
What is wrong?
He is holding you.
What is wrong?
He is leading you. He is leading you.
What is wrong?
And you are going to be a winner and more than a conqueror, and you are going to be a person who is going to be victorious. That is the covenant he is making with us today.
What is wrong?
And the fifth thing, what is the covenant God is making with us?
What is wrong?
It says, God credits us to become perfect, righteous like Jesus.
What is wrong?
Second Corinthians, chapter five and verse twenty-one.
What is wrong?
It says that righteous is not earned but received.
What is wrong? What is wrong?
Praise the Lord.
What is wrong?
And the sixth covenant God is making today,
What is wrong?
He says, God gives us the Holy Spirit to teach us, according to John fourteen twenty-six.
What is wrong?
Many a times, we need counsel from the Holy Spirit.
What is wrong?
And when the Holy Spirit teaches us, what happens? Instead of going to the wrong place, we go to the right place.
What is wrong?
That is what God is doing to you this day.
What is wrong?
You are going to be filled with the power of the Holy Spirit, and that Holy Spirit will re-lead you to the right places.
What is wrong?
And the last covenant what God is making you today, here in Bethel,
What is wrong?
God empowers us to overcome the enemy, according to one John five four.
What is wrong? What is wrong?
Where is the devil?
What is wrong?
He is under our feet.
What is wrong?
Why? Because God is giving us that power to rebuke every Satan, and he is giving us, why even problem comes, we have to think about it? God is empowering us, that the enemy is defeated always.
What is wrong? What is wrong?
Problem? Women? We only sit and cry.
What is wrong?
But what does the Bible says here?
What is wrong?
The enemy cannot defeat us.
What is wrong?
Because Jesus has already paid the price for us, and we can rebuke the Satan in the name of Jesus.
What is wrong?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
So today, God is making covenant with you.
What is wrong?
And he is, when he has made this covenant, these seven blessings are yours in the name of Jesus.
What is wrong?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Are you happy? You know, today is a day of, you know, extra joy.
What is wrong?
So, but I don't see joy and smile on everybody's face.
What is wrong?
I am seeing serious faces.
What is wrong?
Come on, are you happy with these seven blessings?
What is wrong?
Ask your neighbor.
What is wrong?
Are you blessed?
What is wrong?
Come on, ask them, are you blessed?
What is wrong?
Tell them, I am blessed.
What is wrong?
Come on, if they are sleeping, just wake them up.
What is wrong?
I am blessed.
What is wrong?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Praise the Lord.
What is wrong?
So, the second thing, what happens at Bethel?
What is wrong?
Bethel is a place of blessing.
What is wrong?
Let's read that.
What is wrong?
Genesis twenty-eight, verse thirteen and fourteen.
What is wrong?
Read fourteen.
What is wrong?
I said fourteen. The Bible reads that all people on earth will be blessed through you and your offspring.
What is wrong?
Through you.
What is wrong?
Particularly you.
What is wrong?
Your family will be blessed through you.
What is wrong?
Come on, church, your family will be blessed through you.
What is wrong?
Wherever you go through, you blessings will flow.
What is wrong?
That is what the Bible says, all people on earth will be blessed. The people in Daven Gere will receive blessings through you.
What is wrong? What is wrong?
Come on, lift your hands and say, I am blessed.
What is wrong?
You are going to be a blessing.
What is wrong?
You are not ordinary. Come on, tell the devil, you know, the devil should run away from this place. By evening, he should not be here at all.
What is wrong?
Remind him the power that we have. Tell him, I am blessed.
What is wrong?
Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. I am seeing heaven open over you right now.
What is wrong?
I am seeing heaven pouring out the blessing on each one of you.
What is wrong?
God is pouring his blessing, he is saying, you are important. Through you, I am going to bless families, generations, and you shall be a blessing.
What is wrong?
Hallelujah. Today, we are carrying this blessing with us.
What is wrong?
We are walking out with the power that is going to work, and we are going to shake the nation for the glory of Jesus.
What is wrong?
Do you know what blessing means?
What is wrong?
The Hebrew word for blessing means,
What is wrong?
The meaning of Hebrew in blessing is,
What is wrong?
We are anointed to be winners.
What is wrong?
I am telling you, put your hand on your head and say, I am anointed to be a winner.
What is wrong?
Come on, receive that blessing right now.
What is wrong?
That's what the Bible teaches us, that we are anointed to be a winner.
What is wrong?
And what else that Hebrew meaning says about blessing?
What is wrong?
It says that we are empowered to overcome anything that comes our way.
What is wrong?
Let any situation the devil bring.
What is wrong?
Come on, say, I am an overcomer.
What is wrong?
I am an overcomer.
What is wrong?
Jesus said,
What is wrong?
I have overcome the world.
What is wrong?
That same power is in you and I, that we are overcomers.
What is wrong?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Are you not happy?
What is wrong?
We are overcomers.
What is wrong?
And you know, this is so important about blessing, the Hebrew meaning.
What is wrong?
Impossible to curse.
What is wrong?
Nobody can curse you.
What is wrong?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Nobody can pronounce anything against you, because we have the blood covering of Jesus. Nobody can stop us. We are the impossible people.
What is wrong?
And when the blessing of God comes in our life,
What is wrong?
Let's read this verse.
What is wrong?
Proverbs ten twenty-two.
What does it says? What is wrong?
Read that.
What is wrong?
What is wrong? Proverbs ten twenty-two.
What is wrong?
Read, brother.
What is wrong?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
What mighty verse is this?
What is wrong?
The blessing of the Lord makes one rich. He adds no trouble, nothing, nothing can stop us.
What is wrong?
So when blessings come from God,
What is wrong?
There will be no trouble.
What is wrong?
When you buy a house,
What is wrong?
No trouble.
What is wrong?
When you buy a car,
What is wrong?
No trouble.
What is wrong?
When you want to do something,
What is wrong?
No trouble in our life.
What is wrong?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Why? Because,
What is wrong?
The blessing of the Lord makes one rich, and he adds no trouble to it.
What is wrong?
Praise the Lord.
What is wrong?
That is the promise today for each one of you at the house of God in Bethel, you are going to be blessed, hallelujah.
What is wrong?
Praise be to God.
What is wrong?
And the third thing, what happens in the right place, Bethel?
What is wrong?
Yeah, let's read Genesis twenty-eight sixteen.
What is wrong?
What is wrong? What is wrong? What is wrong? Praise be to God. What happened there was,
What is wrong?
Jacob knew that heaven is working in that place.
What is wrong?
When you come to the house of God,
What is wrong?
What happens?
What is wrong?
What is open for us?
What is wrong?
What we read just now.
What is wrong?
Heaven is open.
What is wrong?
So when you are sitting here in this place,
What is wrong?
Every one of you,
What is wrong?
Are experiencing heaven's door being opened in your life.
What is wrong?
And then what happened there?
What is wrong?
When heaven's door is open,
What is wrong?
Jacob did one thing.
What is wrong?
He surrendered to God.
What is wrong?
When the heaven's door is open, you got to surrender to God.
What is wrong?
That is what happened there. He said, surely the Lord in this place, and I was not aware, and you know, it was an act of worship, and he surrendered to God.
What is wrong? What is wrong?
Every time we face problem at home, every time we face problem at home,
What is wrong?
Every Sunday, we come to church, right?
What we need to do? What is wrong?
Like how Jacob surrendered, we need to surrender to God.
What is wrong?
And then what did Jacob do after surrendering? He went on his journey.
What is wrong?
That was the right place that he surrendered to God.
What is wrong?
And when he surrendered to God,
What is wrong?
And he went on his journey.
What is wrong?
We all know the story, how much of hard work, how much of everything he had to go through.
What is wrong?
But, you know, he went alone from Bethel.
What is wrong?
But when he came back,
What is wrong?
What happened?
What is wrong?
When he surrendered to God,
What is wrong?
He received twelve generations of blessing. Also, he received riches, honor, and everything was blessed and added to his account.
What is wrong?
Hallelujah.
What is wrong?
When you surrender to God,
What is wrong?
No matter how difficulty comes in our life.
What is wrong?
God blesses us.
What is wrong?
That is the encounter we are having at Bethel.
What is wrong?
So next, what happened?
What is wrong?
What happens at Bethel?
What is wrong?
Genesis, chapter thirty-five, verse two to three.
What is wrong?
It says that he had sanctification and rededication.
What is wrong?
Every time we come to the house of God,
What is wrong?
We need to sanctify ourselves, because we all are human.
What is wrong?
We are so holy, right? We don't do any sin.
What is wrong?
You know, in the road, you know, if somebody comes and dashes us also, we will be like, praise the Lord.
What is wrong?
Correct. What is wrong? What is wrong? What is wrong? So every time, you know, when we go from Bethel and we are in the world, we face so many things, we become corrupt, we use filthy languages, we do sin. And but when we come back to Bethel, that is what it says, we need sanctification. What does it say there? He had to put away idols.
What is wrong?
Idols is not only statues.
What is wrong?
Anything that we give importance to, anything that we have importance in our life, becomes an idol in our life.
What is wrong?
It may be your family.
What is wrong?
It may be your job.
What is wrong?
It may be your possession. It may be your possession.
Nimirundashtirbahudu.
What is that you're giving importance to?
Yakudkoskravagipramukkithana kodthada.
Today, God is telling to Jacob, "Go back to Bethel," and he says to put away the idols.
Devra yakubani hildadani hinthirigi Betheliki hogu madhu nilirundavigrahagalan tagidahakuyemada.
There is something in your life that you have been keeping it as an idol.
Nimamjeetadali yadu vundusangatidhey adana niuv vigrahavanaagini itikondidi.
Today, God is reminding you.
Devra nimignapkavagimartada.
Come on, it's time to, you know, cleanse ourselves from this unrighteousness, so that we can carry the blessing of God.
Naavu anihtivatikendana naman vashuddikariskolabekku madhu devrasanidale niitivandara kaansikoladikina prayasa padabekku.
And then what happened there?
Mathu munde enayitu.
He had to clean and make a change.
Tanan tanu aliy shuddikariskoladu madhu bategalana badalaisabek.
Come on, say to your neighbor, "Change."
Nimapakkadali davunne nodihildri badalavani badalaisu.
Batevarlaisavada la, manis badlaisavada. Elri, mans badlaisri. Bethelaleen maadabekku? Mans badlaisri. Elri, adu engasirik baala kasta. En bekaidru maadburthare? Mans maatravadlaiskoladila. Hello, howda? Howda? Uvanthadharala pa. It's so difficult to change ourselves.
Namana badalaisikolundu baala kasakravagidhey.
Come on, say to them.
Pakkadavargi hildri.
Change.
Badalavane vandri.
Change.
Badalagu.
Charchal badlaagri, manel badlaagri, yalle idru badlaagri. Badlaadaglenenamga ashirvada barodu. Hallelujah. Whenever we change, we receive blessing.
Naavu yavagabadalathave agamata aashuvadisalpatthiri.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
That is what happens at Bethel.
Bethelali aagirundakarevadhey.
Our lives are changed.
Namam jeetavabadalathidhey.
Today, every one of you today at Bethel, you will see a change in your future, you will see a change in the family, you will see a change in your life.
Bethelainu unddevra mannelidundu niuv pratyababaru nimamjeetadali bavishyadindali nimakudumbadali badalavanegalana nimnolikhidiri.
Come on, lift your hands right now.
Nimakai galanamelaithri.
Say, "Jesus."
Hildri esuvay.
I have sinned.
Naanupapi.
I have sinned.
Naanupapamadidhey.
Please forgive me, Jesus.
Esuvay nananukshamissu.
I rededicate my life.
Thirigina nanan.
Come on, say to him, "I rededicate my life."
Hildri thirigina nanan samarpade maathane madaagi.
Nananu purnastapisapa. Hallelujah. Elri elaro.
Elaru hildri.
Rededicate my life.
Devra nanan punastapisthanay.
Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus.
Vandane esuvay.
Oh, hallelujah. We feel so nice, right? When we see that change coming inside of us.
Namam olkidabarunda badalavano noduvaga santhosha vaktadala.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Praise the Lord.
Devri stotra.
You know, women are so very good people.
Strieru tumba ollevaru.
Hallelujah, yes.
Howda?
Ilva. Mathi eni hildanaila nanen enkobekku, ketto ridharan enkobekashte. Women are.
Strieru.
Ollevaru. Elri. Naavu ollevaru. Nichana. Praise the Lord.
Devri stotra.
Hallelujah. So what happened? We are now become, we have become new and we have received that change.
Igana venagidavandare badalavana hondikundu nuutnavagirundavakidilaga.
And next thing, what happens at Bethel?
Bethelali munde enakthadhey.
What happens?
Enayitu.
The Bible tells that transformation happens.
Satyaveda hildadu marpaduvaki unthakthademada.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Let's read it in Genesis chapter 35, verses 10 to 12.
Adikana mota idu hatarindu hanneerdu vachinavanavodikondu.
And before that, let's read Genesis 28:12.
Adikinda munchitavaga ipatthendu hanneerdu vachinavanavodikondu.
Let's read that. Jacob saw a ladder in a dream stretching into heaven, the angels ascending and descending, and verse 13 is important, it says, "And behold, the Lord stood above it."
Aratri avanu kanusukandano, aakkanasanali ondu nichanaginela damaile nintutu, adharutthidi aakashvanumuttitu, adaramaila devaduturu attuttha iluttha iduru.
And let's read Genesis 35, 10 and 12, 10 to 12.
Devru avanigay, ninnahesiranu akobanallave, innu maileninu yakubanenisikoladhey, israelanenisikolabekku endu haeli.
Stop there, stop there. What happened there?
Aliyenaakthadhey.
He is no more a deceiver.
Aninu mosagarnu innu alla.
But God changed him to Israel.
Devru atan israelane madaagi badalavasthaadana.
From today, our old things are gone, we are transformed into a new person because Jesus has paid the price and he says to us, "We are transformed like Jesus."
Naavu halaysangati ulavala badalaginavu nuutnavagimaaalpatidave, nakandru devram kreykudu kondukondidanane matu naavatamakalaga idave.
Every time we come to the house of God.
Pratisari devramanagina baruvaga.
We change.
Naavu badalathave.
Every time we are renewed.
Pratisari namnuutnavalakthave.
Every time we are transformed.
Pratisari na badalathave.
Transformation is nothing but a complete change.
Marpaduvaki ennundadadure sampoona vagirundapadavane.
Anganta niuv shanti alla, baireno antakarya alla, namalipurnavada badalavane. Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. Eshtojana, they'll think that, you know, when they change name, they become holy.
Kellu ankoldharay hesaran badalaisitakshna parshudraakburthare.
Only the name of Jesus can make us holy.
Esuvan hesurumata naman parshudraanagimath.
Only the blood of Jesus can make us holy.
Esuvan rakthu mata naman parshudraanagimath.
So today, our destiny is being transformed. We are going to go completely changed. When we go and start going to places, people will tell, "There is something changing you."
Namam antivatunam munde dinagalu badalaglikidhey yakandru devrum namanamali maadundabadalavandangalena hotikundhogu vaga, mathu janravana manoduvaga vaga hildtarayur badalagidare madaagi.
What is that change?
Agida badalavane enu.
They see Jesus in us.
Avur namali esuvana nottha.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Have you noticed when you meet some people?
Niuv yavagjanravana nodhagakurtisidare enadu.
Have you noticed sometimes we really get angry, you know, when we see some people?
Kellu janravano noduvaga vandu vidavagirundu kopanamgibarthadhey.
But when we see some kind of people, we feel happy, we feel that joy. Have you, have you really noticed that?
Adu kellu noduvaga santhosha vaktadu samadhanabartadhey, adana anubavisidhirani yaradru?
Have you noticed that?
Anubavisidhiran? Kurtisidhiran?
Onansathyo operna nodhagak full kopa. Avur nodhadrane agadeela atara experience maadidira? Why?
Yakidhey?
Why? Because they carry a different spirit inside of them.
Yakandru avarolage bairi vidavagirundu atmo.
When you have the right spirit, what happens? We spread joy, we spread peace, we bring, you know, the blessing of Christ.
Namali yavagastadu yada atmovana hondikonduruthi vun shantiyana preethinam samadhanavana potuyuvandu varagirtseve.
Praise the Lord.
Devri stotra.
That is what we are going to carry. When we go out, people will see, you are carrying the love of Christ in you.
Naavu idanene hotikundohukthadhey varkidahogiruvada janravihildadhar devra belakana naavu notada madaagi.
Come on, say, "I received that transformation."
Hildri naanu amarpaduvaki naman koltanemada.
Thank you, Jesus.
Vandane esuvay.
When you are in the right place.
Niuv sariyagirundashtaladali ruvaga.
Bethel is a place of liberty.
Bethel ennu vandudu bidugadesthalavagidhey.
2 Corinthians 3:17.
2 Corinthians 3:17.
When you are in the right place, Bethel, what happens is Bethel is a place of prayer.
Niuv Bethelainu undasariyagirundashtaladali ruvaga avundashtalavu prathani sthalavemada karesikoltadhey.
And the next thing is Bethel is a place of safety according to Proverbs 18:10.
Agnanukti hatinendu hatnik ansaravagidu adu vandu rakshani sthalavagidhey.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
So when you experience this Bethel.
I Bethelana vanaubavisuvaga.
When you are in the right place.
Niuv shtaladusariyadashtaladali ruvaga.
Three things happen to you.
Purusangatigalina.
What happens?
Enakthadhey?
First is.
Motalidakidhey.
Protection.
Samrakshane.
Come on, say, "You are protected."
Hildri naavu rakshisalpatidave madaagi.
Come on, say, "I am protected."
Hildri naanu rakshisalpatidane.
So the first thing, Psalm 61:3 says, "The name of the Lord is a strong tower; righteous run to it and they are safe."
Naavu knotteve kirtaneli devra hesurbalavada purjuadhal niitivandu nodi hogadhal badravagirtane madaagi.
Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
And second thing, what happens?
Erni dakidhey enakthadhey.
It says, "We are filled with confidence."
Naavu bhavasayindatumisalpatidhey.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
When we are in the right place.
Naavu yavagasariyadashtaladali idhavay.
We receive protection.
Naavu rakshana hondikoltadhey.
Second thing, we are confident.
Erni dakidnaavu bhavasulavala vageidhey.
Whatever decision we take.
Navene nirdharagan tagidikondursaha.
We have confidence because who is working for us?
Namgibhavasidhathadhey yakandru namakoskravakare maatharundu nyaru?
Heaven is working for us.
Parlokku namakoskravakare maathadhey.
Wherever we are, heaven is working for us.
Navela idrusha parlokku namakoskravakelsamartadhey.
That is the confidence we have.
Namalirundabhavasayadakidhey.
We really don't know what power we carry.
Namamna hotikondirundusakthi enakidhey.
When you have that name of Jesus, I tell you, you can go across and defeat any situation with confidence.
Esuvan hesurumaliruvaga navyaadishtalake hogidurussaha, aliy naavu saithanana naman solisabahu dagidhey.
And the final thing, when you are in the right place, it says, "Security."
Mathu konidakidnu sariyagirundashtaladali ruvaga vandu badrathane nimgirtadhey.
Security means to be highly protected and you are safe all the time.
Badrathandranu samrakshisalpatavara ellasamadali subadravagirtthiri.
Many a times, you know, we don't have security in life because financial problem, we have financial things, you know, we have family problem, we don't have security at all.
Anekasari namam jeetadali badrathaidu idu, hanakasana visayadalo, kudumbadusangatigalalayu namamavundu badrathanamalirudila.
Psalm 21 and Psalm 91:14 says what safety and security we have.
Kirtanipatthundu madhutomthundu naluku idu badrathayandre enne madaakuritha hildadhey.
Psalm 91:14.
Kirtanitomthundu hatinalku.
So this is the security we have.
Namamirundabadrathaidakidhey.
So did everyone understand when we are in the right place, what are the blessings we receive?
Sariyagirundashtaladali ruvaga yavyava aashuvadagala hondikoladevamada artavaita?
Where are you today?
Niuvveldidiri vatu?
Where are you today?
Niuvveldidiri.
Bethel, right? We are in the house of God.
Naavu devramanelidhey.
So all this what happened in Bethel is your portion of blessing.
Bethelali enenusangatigalu jarugidavo adu eganima swasthavagidhey.
It was not only for Jacob, but it is for everyone in the Bible. Whoever reads the word of God, these blessings are mine.
Adu keevala yakubaniyamaathal simidavagadala badalagi, satyavedalindu pratyababaru madhu satyavedavana odhi anisarisundu pratyababari aashuvadagala idhey.
So next thing we see about.
Munde sangaithinodhteve.
Right connection.
Sariyadasamparka.
Cable connection elthalana no. Right connection.
Sariyadasamparka.
Elri pakkadavargi.
Pakkadavargi hildri.
Right connection.
Sariyadasamparka.
Iga wire rope lagali connectaagila andre advarkagala. Sariyagaakbekku. Alva? You have to connect everything rightfully, then only you will start activating things.
Ellavana sariyagini haakidhaka samparkisadaga maatravellousarak kelsamartadhey.
You know, to get that right kind of connection, you need to have right people.
Sariyagirundusamparkavana hondikoladukaagisariyagirunduvaktigalunimga avashvagidha.
Sometimes when we are with wrong people.
Kellusarana tapagirundu janagalundigirtave.
You lose your blessings.
Mathu im aashuvadavana kaladikolathiri.
Today, you might think, "Why you are not receiving blessing?" God is telling you, "Check your connection."
Niuvvatu vandu velenyaki aashuvadakthale madaagi nimana prashthamadikoltadharu, adharu devra hildadharay, nimasamparkavana niuparikshamadikoldri.
Come on, tell your neighbor, "Check your connection."
Nimapakkadavana nodihildri nimasamparkavana parikshamadri.
Elri, nitte maadbedri. Elri. Check your connection.
Nimasamparkavana parikshamadri.
Connection sariyilandre enu sariyagala. Hallelujah. Elri, connection sariyilandre enu agala. One mobileu chargeagala. Correct? You need a right connection.
Nimgisariyadasamparkabekakidhey.
If you need things to work in your life, you need to be connected rightfully.
Namam jeetadali sariyagino karegalujarugabekakri sariyadasamparkagalu beku.
Okay, let's see one wrong connection in the Bible.
Satyavedalidu tapagirundak connection samparkavana nodhuna.
Numbers chapter 16, verse 35 to 38.
Arannakana hatinaranayadi ayam mota idindam motaindu.
You know, you know the person named Korah.
Korah anundavakti kuriitha.
You know, it says that, you know, he rebelled against the man of God.
Illanu nottheve devru manushina virudavaga atun gunugitidana thirigibidana madaagi.
And what happened? Was he alone?
Atun oppantiganagidna?
What does it say there? How many people he had with him?
Atun ondige eshtujanrideremada satyaveda hildadhey.
Wrong connection, how many people connected with him?
Atun ondige tapagisamparkadali idu vandu janr eshtujanaidra atun ondike.
Two fifty people.
Innura ayvatujanravu.
Elri, how many people?
Hildri eshtujana?
Nidnanavakavak checkmaatharati, nitte maathaidira ilvanta. How many people?
Eshtujana?
Two hundred and fifty people.
Innura ayvatujanravu.
So what happened when, you know, that wrong connection with Korah and those people?
Korahanandhige tapagiruvantavundu samparkadalidhuvadu, janrav enathukotha?
When he did, you know, when they had that wrong connection, complete, they were destroyed.
Avundu tapagirundusamparka, idhak, sampuruvadu, naashasalpatti daray.
Come on, say to your neighbor.
Nimmapakkadavarghe hailtri.
If you are not connected rightfully.
Nuv sariyagi samparkavana hondilathaidhade?
You will be destroyed.
Nenu naashavavahunditi.
Come on, say to them.
Nimmapakkadavarghe hailtri.
If your friend is not right.
Ninnasneethunu sariyillathaidhre?
You will be destroyed.
Nenu naashavakthi.
If you are, you know, somebody you are connected to is not right.
Nenu samparkakundruundu vektigallu sariyillathaidhre?
You will be destroyed.
Nenu naashavakthi.
Be careful.
Echchavagirri?
Hailtri.
Hailtri, nimpakka davarghe.
Be careful.
Echchavagirri?
Yaarjathesavasa maathaidhira, usharaagirri. Illanre? Kandita? Naashnanik. Praise the Lord. Connection is very important.
Samparku bahu pramukkevada daki ide.
What is the right connection we need to have?
Navu hondikundrubekagare, sariyagirundusamparka yavu.
The first connection you need to have is with God.
Modhali samparkandhre, adu devravandikirubekku.
The connection with God will lead you to supernatural victory.
Devravandikirundu samparkavu, adu athina isarkika, varagirundu jayakinamana nadistadu.
Today, God is asking you, are you daily basis connected with me?
Devre kailthaadhar, prathey dinakannusaravaginannandhige, samparkadalidhira?
Esthot phoneal matarthira, bera orjathate. Neighbor ante, aurante, magalante, aliyante, esthot matarthira. Three hours, one hour, two hour?
Muruthas, onethas, edhitas, kitle matarthiavala?
How many hours?
Esthuthas kulu.
How many hours you have connection with God?
Esthuthas kulu, tanakad, devrassamparkadalidhira?
Come on, God is speaking to you now.
Devre nimmadhamatanaaththa.
God is asking you, are you connected with me rightfully?
Devre kailthaadhar, sariyagi, nanandhige samparkadalidhira?
You know, David was a man after God's own heart.
Davidanu, Davidanu, devru, oppuvantamunushinagidhunu?
Every time he was connected with God.
Prathey sari, devravandhige samparkadalathaniidhunu?
You know, sometimes once he sinned, right? He had, he committed adultery with Beshiba.
Vandu sari, Beshibala joteeli, pappagalanamadidhana?
So because of that sin, did he go away from God?
Apapadhanimithavagidh, devre nathan horuthuvadna?
Still, he was connected. He knelt down before God and he said, Lord, I have sinned against you, forgive me. He had that rightful connection with God.
Adu innusa, devrasanidhalidhukundu, monkalanamela, devre, ninnavirudhvaaginannapapa maadidhane vadaagi, paschaapapadhan, devrasanidhalarkemartathadana?
So today, God is asking you, check your life, are you rightfully connected with me to receive blessings?
Idu devre kailthaadhar, ninnaniparikshamadikku, sariagirundusamparkavana, hondikundidhade, vadaagi, ninniparikshamadikku, vadaakiailthaadharay.
Talking about the right connection.
Sariyadasamparkadukurithaai hailthaadharay?
Ruth was rightfully connected with Naomi.
Ruthalu, Naomi, navomi, vandhige sariyadasamparkavana honditalu?
If you read in Ruth, chapter one, you can see how their bonding was.
Ruthu, ruthalapustakavandane, adyadhala, oduvaaga, avundu sariyadasamparka, hekitha, vadaagi, navoodhathave?
Naomi says to both her daughter-in-law, enough, now I don't have any more children to, you know, get you all married, please go back, she says.
Naomi than eredusosari hailthaadhar, eganagamakkalilla, adharani, vandusontavurgalini hogbittaramba daki.
But what does Ruth do?
Adhuruthalain maathatha?
One daughter-in-law goes back.
Vandusosari hintiriyogthale?
But the other daughter-in-law gets connected with the mother-in-law. She says, your God is my God. Whatever you do, wherever you go, I am going to be rightly connected with you.
Adhunobasosari hailthaadhal, neelirti, naanallierta, ninnavdevru, matthi hogundu, illa thalagal, naanirtana, nimandhisa samparkadalithanemba daki hailthaadhalai.
Even now, you know, we can see in the generational, when we read in Matthew, all those generation, you can see the name of Ruth.
Mathaadhalisandhatekugala kurithaaginavu, oduvaaga, ruthalaheserusa, vandagirundu, namnodhathave?
When you are connected with God, your names are written in the book of life.
Nuv devravandhige samparkadalidhuvadu, jeevula, pustakadalidhameheseruparilparthade?
When you are connected with God, wherever you go, doors will start to open for you.
Nenu devrassamparkadalidhuvagirin, ellae hodhusa, devrabaagilani, goskaravagitthirilparthade?
When you are connected with God, nobody can stand against you all the days of your life.
Nenu devrasariyadasamparkadalidhuvagirin, virudhvaagirin, jeevamadhal, yarussa, ninnavirudhvaaginintikoli kaagudhilala?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
What is the connection are you carrying today?
Nenu hondikundruundu samparka yavudhaki ide.
God told me as I was praying, many people, you know, don't have a proper prayer life.
Anuprathramaduvaaga, devranandhige hailthesangatide, sariyada prathanichivitha illa vembadagi.
You don't have that connection.
Anekarige, avundu samparka illa vembadagi.
Every other things, we have time.
Ella vidavagirundusangatigallu samayavire?
Serial nodak time irathae? Picture nodak time irathae? Prayer madakka time mirala? Churchikbandre, nidde bandbedhate? Picture muravaraakidhre, nidde maathidhira? Hello? Nidde barutha? So, oh, Eva climax, oh, Eva hero agathae, Eva heroininga agathae. So very enthusiastic, that is worldly ways.
Avundu laukikavagirundusangatigallali, astundu utsukaragirtseve?
But when we come to the house of God.
Ardevre mangebaruvaaga?
We don't want, ah, let me sleep, ah, prayer enu naditha, idhinaadili, nadili.
Or madhatmaathathana, ninnadhamanandhate, malakoladevam, ala?
Estchanagi, nam manel nidde barala, raathri malugvaag, nidde barala. But churchikbandre, appa, nemdiyag, nidde barathae. Esthanaagidhira? Hallelujah. Hailtri, nim neighborge, tell your neighbor.
Nimpakka davarghe hailtri?
I'm not sleeping.
Nan nidde maathatala?
Come on, say to them, I'm not sleeping.
Hailtri, nimpakka davarghe, nan nidde maathatala vadaagi?
I want blessings from God.
Devre nandhaniga ashuvadabekku.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Come on now, lift your hands right now.
Nimkai galana melaidhri?
Say to God.
Devre gihailtri?
Lord, forgive me.
Devre nannanukshamis.
I have not spent time with you.
Naninnandhige samayavunakalidilla?
I am not connected with you.
Naninnandhige samparkadalidhira?
Today, I want that right connection.
Nivathu, sariyadasamparkanandhige?
I want to be connected with you.
Naninnandhige samparkadalidhuk.
I want to return back to the first love.
Amodhale, prithigiran, hintirigabekku devre?
I want you, Jesus.
Eeshuvena, nandhige nenu bekku?
Come on, say it right now, as you're calling on Jesus.
Nuv eeshuvena heseridhukuguvaaga?
God is entering your life.
Devre nimchivitali?
God is entering your family.
Devre nimakudumbadhalibhatthaade?
God is entering into every situation.
Devre ellaparistigallu?
Come on, shout loudly, Jesus.
Swanavati hailtri, eeshuve?
Jesus.
Eeshuve?
Help me reconnect to you.
Nimandhige tirigisamparkadalibarudhaka, sahayamadu?
I want to have the right connection with you.
Sariyadasamparkunandhige irubekku devre?
Help me, Jesus.
Sahayamadu?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Praise the Lord.
Devri gistotra.
You know, God's power was touching so many women.
Devre shaktu, anekashtrieranasparshistada?
Today, God is saying.
Devre vathailthaadharay?
From today, your spiritual life is changing.
Nivathirindhre, nina akmicadjuivithavu, badlaaglikidhade?
Your prayer life is changing.
Ninnaprathanichivithavu, badlaaglikidhade?
Your family life is changing.
Ninnakudumbadjuivithu, badlaaglikidhade?
Because you are rightfully connected with Jesus.
Yakandu, eeshuvenandhige sariyagirundusamparkadalidhini nidde tarambithava?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
When you are connected with people.
Nuv janravandhige samparkadalidhuvaga?
Four things you need to know about those people.
Av janrakurithaagin, nalukusangatigallu, nimichinagi gotirubekku?
Whether they are models.
Avru vandu?
Example.
Vandu udharanuvagirundu, janrakidharo, vembadagi?
Whether they are living that model life.
Avundu madharyajjuivithavana, juivistadharo, vembadana, nodikolbe?
Who is a model for us?
Namigobamadharyaragidharay?
Hey, I'm not talking those models, they'll do, no?
Avrtvigallali, athushfashishallali, vandhukmadhargalakuritha, matathathala?
I'm not talking about those models.
Avundu madharyajanrakurithai, matathathala?
I'm talking about the models who set example to us.
Namigudharanavanna, nilisuvantavundu, madharyantovrisuvantav janrakurithaagimata?
Who is the model of your life?
Nimchivitalidh madharyaragidharay?
For me, it's Jesus.
Ananagatharu, eeshuvaagidhane?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Jesus is the only model we can depend upon because even though he was like a man, he never sinned, the Bible says.
Naanuvavalamithavagirubekagindu, vandheyavundu madharyarandhada, eeshuobaniyagidhana, yakandure, eeshu manushinagidrusha, adhunapa maadhillala vadaagi?
So don't follow any person, but follow the model Jesus.
Adharimadharyagirundu, eeshuvena horuthupadisi, yarunusani, himbalisubedhri?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Second thing, what should that person whom you are connected with be like?
Nuv ernesangatide, nuv samparkadalidhuvadu, vektialidhuvadu, ernesangatide?
There should be a mentor.
Avru nimmanavu, vandu sariyagirundu, markadarshana maaduvantavagirubekku?
Who is your mentor?
Nimma markadarshiyaru?
Your pastor.
Nimmasabapalakuru?
He teaches you every Sunday after Sunday, how your family needs to walk with Jesus, how your family can be blessed, how you can receive blessing. He is the right mentor for you.
Bhannuvaradantabhannuvaran, nimashuvadakoskaravagin, nimkudumbadhalibhagirubekku, vektikadjuivitalibhagirubekke, vadaagi, nimmana bodhisuvantavektia, athusabapalakuru, joteeli, nimsamparkadalidhribekku?
So be connected with the right mentor, your pastor.
Sariyagi, oba uttama markadarshiagirundu, nimasabapalakannandhige, nimsamparkadalidhribekku?
You know, when athlete, you know, what he does is, he goes to his coach to get trained.
Obah, otagarapas, obasparthiyu, tanakochbali hogthana?
Why?
Yakke?
Because he wants to win, right?
Adhunagelbe kalva?
That is why he goes to the coach.
Adhursalavagiyatharabethukarana, bali hogthana?
If you want to be a winner, you should get connected with your mentor, so that your family will be blessed, your life will be blessed, everything will be blessed when you are connected with the right mentor, your pastor.
Nenu jaisubekagidhar, ninnatarabethukarana, athuv, ninnamarkadarshiabali, nimsamparkavana, hondikondrubek, ag, ninnajuivitali, kudumbadhalini, jayavana, hondikolti?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Hailtri, pastorge, pastorena, velu ogalana, nimjathak connected agirthi?
Hailtri, nimmasabapalakuru, hailtri, nimmasabapalakuru, naanunimandhige samparkadalithathane vadaagi?
Shoh, adike maneli, esthujora kirstare, gotta ladieso? Hey, ellidiyo, baro? Kirstirailva? Ilvaize parthaila, appa? Hailtri, pastor kelskolli?
Nimmasabapalakuru, kellu kailtri, hailtri?
Hailtri?
Nimswara kelsupak hailtri?
Esthutnu, nuurjana idharapastrelle? Kelsathaidya, nuurjana tharavaizo? Ah, yeno, yeladhrupidi, pastor, nimjathak connected agirtarande? Praise the Lord. Next, what should a person be when you are connected with the right people?
Sariyagirundusamparkadalidhuvaga, sariyadasangatidhribekkari, muraisangatide?
Third thing, a partner.
Muraisangatide, enathar, nimjoteelidhuvantavunu?
Partner is your husband.
Animma purush, nimma gandandharagirubohudu?
Only get connected with him.
Nimmasangathiyathu sahabag.
Hailtri?
Hailtri, nimpakka davarghe?
Nim gandanjathemaatra connection irli?
Nimma gandandharjoteeli, madhak connection irli, samparka irli?
Hello? Come on, tell them.
Hailtri, nimpakka davarghe hailtri?
Bera orjathabeeda? So your partner is very important.
Nimmasangathiyabahu pramukkevagade?
Every time, you need to have that right connection.
Prathey sariyadasamparkadalidhribekku?
You know, my husband is so loving. I'm not telling because he is sitting here, but really, he takes care of me really well.
Iravmane, evru, bhaala, prithivala, kutkutkunidharamtha hailthaala, nijuvagivu, orakalajinavaishta?
He's a real, very good partner for me.
Avru nijuvagivu, varige, bhaal, uttama vagirusangathiyagidharay?
Because he knows, you know, in those days, I have really struggled so much in life and he gave me all the love that he had to show me.
Yakandu, nanhindinakaladhal, nodh, hindinadinakaladhal, nodhuvaga, naanuv, astundu, thondragal, anubhavisidhane, adhavru, ivari, prithyana, kotidharay, odhigisukidharay?
So you also, even though family goes through struggle, do your part rightfully, then your partner will reward you.
Nimkudumbadhalisaha, niuv, thondragal, thondragalil, haathogtharuvaga, nimge, badevagirundukelsath, sariyaginiyumaduvaaga, ellasangatigallu, sarihogtave?
Yaarjathak connection nirbeku? Husband jathae, adhunun, aachkeparbadri, parale, ellargu, husband idharthanae? Husband jathae? Praise the Lord. And the fourth kind of person you need to have a good connection is?
Utthama samparkavandubekkari, nalukne vektiarandhre?
A friend.
Sneitha?
You should see how that friend is.
Asneitharu, hekitharane, vadaagi, nodubekku?
Jonathan was a good friend of David.